Time having arrived for Monday, July 28th, eight o'clock. I hereby call the City Council to order. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, councilors. Again, just because we're in summer session, for your calendars, please put down. We will be back here on Monday, August 18th. That's the third Monday, seven o'clock. That's Finance Committee, August 18th. We will then be here the following week at eight o'clock, August 25th. That will be eight o'clock, full City Council here, August 18th, August 25th. Mr. Clerk.
The appointment of James L. Bragg, Grant Avenue, Brockton, as a member of the Water Commission for a three-year term ending July 2017.
That is referred to Finance Committee.
The reappointment of Philip M. Decker, Augusta Avenue Extension, Brockton as Constable in the City of Brockton, for a term of three years.
Referring to Finance Committee. Councilors, before I'm going to recognize Counsel Barnes. Before I do, I was remiss to say, there is a chance that the live telecast tonight will go off. So those watching it tonight, I was notified that there's a little glitch with the wiring on Comcast. So if you lose us tonight, it will be replayed again tomorrow, but let's cross our fingers. Counselor Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we take number forty-nine out of order.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded, to take number forty-nine out of order. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries. Counselor.
And on the motion, I would ask that there are some members here from the Frederick Douglass Neighborhood Association that would like to speak. With time being the way it is, the next meeting is after the event, and they wanted to make sure that the folks at home and that we were made aware of what's coming up and if they could just have--
Absolutely, councilor. There's no objection to that, right, councilors? No objections. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Barnes, for allowing this invitation to be received. And to offer first, a thank you to the council for the brothers that voted in 2003 to rename High Street to Frederick Douglass Avenue. And that's what we have come here tonight to announce, a celebration that will take place on Sunday, August 17th. And it can be, at the same time, a celebration and an establishment of the Frederick Douglass Neighborhood Association in the area around the avenue in downtown Brockton, but also be a beginning of a community education that we invite you to help us with. We have the Liberty Tree Faith Quilt, which commemorates the tree that once stood on Frederick Douglass Avenue. That will be part of a celebration. And our community education will be to show how Frederick Douglass has deep roots in this community in an historic way because of the communities that live here. He has Cape Verdean ties, he has Haitian ties, he has Irish ties. He certainly has ties to the women's rights movements, and for that, we give great celebration. And also, as a former slave, he led the efforts for abolition and most definitely came through this area to, on the Underground Railroad, or to assist those who were on it. So all of these things we're celebrating, we kick it off tonight with yourselves, and we hope that you'll put it on your schedule, along with Summer Fest for that weekend. It's a Brockton staycation weekend. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. If you could just state, both you ladies, state your name for the record.
Jill Wiley.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Lynn Smith, and I look forward to seeing all of you, August 17th, from one o'clock until five o'clock. And at four o'clock, we're having hot fudge sundaes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Monahan will definitely be there.
I'll make sure I tell Chris McMillan, he'll join me.
And Mike Brady.
You had a vote on it, huh?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, again, Mr. President.
But Counselor.
If I may have a moment. There's a young lady who is in the gallery tonight. Her name is Kamisha Latour. I want to say La-4th, but it's Latour. And she was actually recently crowned Miss Black Massachusetts for 2014. And that's a wonderful, wonderful feat. She's a Brockton native, Brockton High graduate. She currently goes to Babson College, and I believe she's going to be graduating early from college to pursue her career in journalism and communication. I met with her--
Please come up to the podium.
Oh.
Yeah, absolutely.
I met with her last week, and she is on her way to Washington, D.C., to compete for the Miss Black USA. And I just wanted to make sure that she get recognized, and so that folks here in Brockton can see who is representing us in the Miss Black pageants around the nation. And, let's see. The council, actually, would like to present you with an official citation. Should I go over there, or just stand here and read it? Go over, okay. I'm coming over. So, I'll just read it. The City of Brockton, it's an official citation, official citation, be it known, that the Brockton City Council hereby extends its congratulations to Kamisha Latour, Brockton resident, in recognition of winning Miss Black Massachusetts 2014, and will be competing for the Miss Black USA in Washington, D.C. And be it further known, that the City Council extends best wishes and continued success, that the citation be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the council. And it is signed by our council president, Mr. Robert Sullivan, our clerk, and it's presented by myself, and I just want to say, congratulations. You're a wonderful shining star for young girls and young boys in Brockton, and just bring home the crown, bring home the glory.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor, if we could read number forty-nine.
Order that the committee of Frederick Douglass Neighborhood Association appear before a committee of this council to promote ten-year anniversary celebration for the renaming of High Street to Frederick Douglass Way.
That's referred to Finance. We're going to go back to number three.
Petition of National Grid proposing to install four-foot, four-inch conduit concrete encased between MH 226 and MH 11 Montella Street at Ward Street, AKA Petronelli Way, approximately thirty-one feet. New conduits are required due to National Grid extending new primary power for the residents at Center and Main Street and the Enterprise Building.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please come forward to the podium. Anyone here in favor relative to this matter? Stand a motion to postpone--
Mr. President, Mr. President--
Counselor.
Can we postpone this till the end of the meeting, see if they do show up, because--
Step forward.
I asked you to please come forward, sir, and state your name to the podium, please.
Yes, councilors, Jim Pearson, operations engineer of National Grid. We are requesting the conduits to serve the new development extirade over here. Those conduits are required, A, to provide service to that new building, as well as rebuild our underground network that we have in this area. Presently, the part of that network is over a hundred years old. And as a lot of the old buildings been coming down, we've been rebuilding it with new cables and getting customers off the network onto a new system that we're building. And these conduits are going to be instrumental in picking up this new complex over here. So we're here before you tonight to request permission for those conduits.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President?
Counselor.
Sir, could you come back to the podium, please? Now, you'll be reconstructing this on Petronelli Way, correct?
At the intersection of Petronelli Way and North Montella Street, right that corner right there, correct.
When do you expect to be doing this work?
We'd like to start immediately. We have been pulling cables within the last week. We got about a month's worth of work ahead of us. And as in good faith, we did, we're doing our cable work, but we will need this piece to connect into that duct line that goes up Petronelli Way that's going to pick up that complex.
So that should be detoured when you start doing that work, I would assume, correct?
There will be a cop with us. There'll be a detail, and he'll control the traffic for us.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Excuse me, sir. How long do you think that's going to take for, from cut to--
To install the two conduits, about two days at the most. It won't take that long. Thirty-one feet. It's very short, very narrow trench.
Okay, so it won't be too much of a disruption to traffic and--
No, we'll have a detail with us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions for the gentlemen? Anyone else here in favor? If so, come forward. Please state your name. Anyone here? Anyone here? I'm going to close that part of the hearing. Anyone here in opposition relative to this matter? Anyone here in opposition? Third and final, anyone here in opposition? The matter's closed. We're going to vote on this at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Petition of Verizon, New England Inc., Massachusetts Electric Company, requesting permission to relocate one pole, Pole 54 slash 41 on Pleasant Street. This petition is necessary in order to accommodate M.D.O.T. Project 600365.
Time having arrived, I'm going to declare that part of the hearing open. If anyone's here on this matter, please come forward. Good evening, ma'am.
Kellyanne Carden, on behalf of Verizon. And this was to accommodate the Mass Department of Transportation work widening the sidewalks, putting handicap ramps and everything. This particular pole couldn't stay relatively close because of the duct bank there, so we did have to move it back fifty-two feet to tie in to where we could at the duct bank.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Counselor.
Counselor.
Just where exactly is that pole, whereabouts on Pleasant Street? Do you know?
If you measure northerly from, I'm sorry, if you measure easterly from the centerline of North Ash Street, the new pole location will be a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions? Seeing none. Anyone else here in favor? Anyone here in favor about this? Seeing none, I'm going to close that part of the hearing. Anyone here in opposition relative to this matter? Anyone here in the chamber in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing's closed as well. We're going to act on it at the end of the night. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Petition of Court Street Realty Trust for garage license located at 369 Court Street, in City Clerk's Office, June 24th, 2014. Hearing assigned for July 28th, 2014, at 8:00 P.M. All the necessary paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Sir, if you could please state your name for the record.
Good evening, President, councilors. My name's Enrique Fernandez. I'm the owner of 369 Court Street, which is Five Corner Auto Sales, and I'm trying to obtain my garage and repair license also on that property.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Denapoli.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. I have, if you read down Article, the petition number six coincides with this, and I have stipulations on both the garage license and the repair license that will be going with the auto sales. So at the end of that, I would have stipulations on that.
Counselor, I'm under the belief you can't put stipulations on a garage license.
Can do them on a repair license.
On the repair, but not on the garage, you can't.
The number of vehicles in the garage, I believe we can. Cannot? Okay.
It's in the application, right? No, it's in the application.
All right, that's fine. I'll accept that.
Thank you, Counselor.
We just don't want to see what happens with the car wash situation.
Yeah, relative to the number of the cars, it's in the application itself, so they have to stipulate that as such. Anything else? Any other councilors have a question for the applicant? Anyone else here in favor relative to this matter? Counselor Stewart, did you have a question?
Mr. President, I just want to make certain I know what the stipulations are before we cast our votes.
That would be on the number six, correct? We're on number five right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else here in favor relative to this matter? If so, please come forward. Anyone here? I'm going to close that part of the hearing. Anyone here in opposition relative to this matter? Anyone here in opposition? Third and final, anyone in opposition? That part of the hearing's closed. Matter comes before us now. Entertainer motion, Counselor.
Motion to approve.
All in favor granting the license?
Second.
All opposed. License is hereby granted. Number six, please.
Petition of Five Corner Auto Sales in Service for Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical License Located at 369 Court Street, in City Clerk's Office, June 24th, 2014. Hearing assigned for July 28th, 2014, at 8:00 P.M. The necessary paperwork is on file, and there are no objections by the fire department.
Time having arrived, I'm going to declare the hearing open. You're here in favor? If you could state your name again, sir?
Yes, sir. My name's Enrique Fernandez.
Counselor Denapoli.
Mr. President, I will implement, after you close, the portion of this, the stipulations on this garage, and I will read them.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Barnes.
Yes, I have a question. This is the property right on the corner of North Carey and--
Ector Street.
Correct, on the right-hand side, as you're going up the hill.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So with your repair prospects, I guess, have you, I guess, introduced yourself or made yourself aware that that business is going to be back up and running to the neighbors there? There's a business right behind, and a business that directly abuts, and they're pretty bustling businesses. So with the noise maybe from the repair, have you worked that out with them, with your neighbors, that that's coming, or?
No, I never really, I mean, they knew, they knew the way of the garage repair license. They never had--
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you clearly.
I spoke to several of the neighbors, they never had no problems or no issues with me, hoping of repair license, as long as I'm not there late at night, I imagine, so I don't keep them awake.
Okay.
Like I said, I've been, I've been doing the same business in the City of Brockton for twelve years. And my old location's the 65 Court Street, which I have residence on top of me, and I never had no problem. I had my old license, I chit in back in October. Since I relocated, I bought the new place. You know, I understand residential, I respect that. And, like I said, that's why I'm trying to get where the time is, where I don't interrupt them at night.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Counselors, any other questions? Anyone else here in favor relative to this matter? Anyone here in favor? That part of the hearing's closed. Anyone here in opposition? Anyone in the chamber in opposition relative to this matter? Third and final, that matter's closed. Counselor Denapoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. And these are the stipulations that we are going to put on the repair license at Five Corner Auto Sales slash Court Street Realty, which is the same person is running both We can't do anything with the inside storage, but we're going to, we come up with a situation where it will be four. The number of vehicles stored outside will be four. There'll be no storing of wrecked or damaged vehicles on the property, and there'll be no outside storing of auto byproducts. There'll be no payphones or vending machines. The hours of operation, we worked out with the neighbors and the gentleman that's applying for the license, the hours, Monday through Friday, will be seven to eight P.M. On Saturdays, seven to six P.M. No Sundays, and no holidays. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Stewart.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. Fernandez, correct?
Yes, sir.
So are you comfortable with those stipulations on your business, and are you certain you can make a profit with those hours that are stipulated?
I'm fine, I'm fine with stipulation.
Okay, I ask that question because, as you may be aware, the city has a pretty aggressive code enforcement team, and in the past, I've had business owners come to me who frankly, they've lost their businesses because they lost their licenses, because they couldn't comply with the stipulations. And so I think they may have agreed to stipulations that were not to their financial advantage or their benefit, and I don't want to see another business get in that situation. So based on your business plan, the hours of operation are suitable for you, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Great, all right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I just want to state for the record that I've known Mr. Fernandez for most of our adult lives, as we basically attended school together, we're a few years older than he is, but we were at Brockton High School basically right around the same time. And he's a person of good character and sound management style and stuff, and I urge my fellow councilors to approve his license.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, sir.
Counselors, anything else? Matter's going to come before us with the stipulations, license to be granted with the stipulations attached thereto as stated by Counselor Denapoli. All in favor granting a license with stipulations? All opposed? License is granted with stipulations.
Mr. President, thank you, Counselor.
Have a good evening. Have a good night. Mr. Clerk.
Petition of A.L. Prime Energy Consultants, Inc., for an underground storage license located at 757 Crescent Street, in City Clerk's Office, May 27th, 2014. Hearing assigned for July 28th, 2014. All unnecessary paperwork is on file, filed, and the fire department has no objections.
Time having arrived, I'm going to declare this part of the hearing, this hearing open. Anyone here in favor, please come forward, state your name to the clerk. Evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Brian Shannon. I'm the real estate manager for A.L. Prime Energy Consultants, Incorporated. We're here to try to get the license, the underground storage license transferred from the Ness Realty Trust, A.L. Prime Energy.
Thank you, Mr. Jean, for being here. Any questions, councilors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Denapoli.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, it's nice to see the gas station open again, and this is right in front of Carefree Towers, in front of Supreme Donut Shop. And it looks very, very nice, and I, how long have you been open right now?
I think we're open approximately two months.
Two months? Okay.
And we, as you know, we have two other locations--
No, no, I understand that. It's just, it just took you a while to come in front of us to get the storage license.
What happened was, I wasn't, I was trying to get all the paperwork and information that I needed to make the application, and then we missed the meeting of a month ago, and then we filed, and then it took this amount of time to get onto this docket. So I believe we were in touch with the City Clerk's Office an appropriate amount of time, but it did lag a little bit.
No, you weren't, you didn't break any laws. I was, I was on top of it. And I thank, thank you very much, and good luck on your business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselors, any other questions? Anyone else here in favor? If so, come forward. Anyone else here in favor? That part of the hearing's closed. Anyone here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition on this matter? Third and final, that part of the hearing's closed. License is before us now, councilors. All in favor of granting a license? All opposed? License is hereby granted.
Report of the Public Safety Committee for its meeting of July 21st, 2014.
Counselors, that's accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of July 21st, 2014.
That, too, is accepted and placed on file.
Abbott Communication from the Acting Chief of Police, requesting authorization to expand grant monies related to the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Mental Health, Fiscal 2015 Jail Diversion Grant.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That, too, is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That also is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Acting DPW Commissioner, requesting approval for the land taking of ninety-six temporary easements and four permanent easements in relation to the West Elm Street Reconstruction Project. In order to finance the project, the city will expend from appropriated Chapter 90 funds in the amount of $77,200 as follows. Temporary easements, ninety-six awards, $72,900. Permanent easements, four awards, $4,300.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That, too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Abbott-- Communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council grant a temporary construction easements and/or permanent easements for highway purposes. Said easements are to benefit the abutting properties by allowing for an orderly transition between the new work and said abutting properties and related work.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council declares 226 Main Street, MAP 110, Route 19, Plot 368, available for disposition and sale, and further authorize the sale to the Mass Division of Capital Assets Management and Maintenance for the purchase price of $1.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That, too, is accepted and placed on file.
Abbott Communication from the Emergency Management Director, requesting that the City Council accepts the donation from Market Basket, any amount of $150. The donation will be used to build a water and food reserve.
That is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That, too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Acting DPW Commissioner, requesting to appropriate $1,750,000 through borrowing authorizations. This request is for the conventional replacement and rehabilitation of deteriorated sewer mains, services, and manholes across the cities.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That also is accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
That, too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Acting DPW Commissioner, requesting appropriation totaling $99,000 to purchase fifteen new surveillance cameras at a cost of $6,600 each for the Department of Public Works refuse division. The purpose is to place them in known dumping areas within the city. This equipment should aid our efforts to eliminate illegal dumping within the city. Further requesting $150,000 to purchase a bucket truck to maintain, remove, and replace cameras in known dumping areas within the city.
That is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That, too, is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the library director requesting a supplemental operating budget increase for fiscal 2015 of $33,602. This would bring the fiscal 2015 operating budget to $2,127,000. The increase is needed in order to meet the minimum requirements for the state aid public libraries award certification based on the formula by state law.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Counselors, that's accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
We have the petition of John Ruin Quincy for a license to suspend assigned at 379 Belmont Street, writing for the committee with a return of favorable.
Counselors, questions on adoption by roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stedenski. Yes.
Yes. Petition is hereby adopted.
Appointment of Rob May to the Position of Director of Planning and Economic Development for the City of Brockton for a five-year term ending June 2019, and City Council, June 23rd, 2014. Writing for the Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Counselors, questions on confirmation by roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stedenski. Yes.
Yes. Appointment is hereby confirmed.
Reappointment of John Ash Daco, Brockton as a Constable of the City of Brockton, for a term of three years, and Council, May 27th, 2014. Writing for the Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Counselors, the questions on confirmation by roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Azat.
Yes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Yes.
Iannieri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes. Counselors, the reappointment is confirmed.
Appropriation of $89,969.70 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistant Fiscal 13 Grant to Brockton Police Fiscal 13 Justice Assistant Grant Fund. These grant funds will be used to continue the community's proactive approach in assisting victims of domestic and community violence by hiring a part-time social worker to be housed at the Brockton Police Department, and council June 23, 2014. The committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Counselors, questions on adoption by roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Azat.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Iannieri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Yes. Appropriation is hereby adopted.
An appropriation of $130,000 from the stabilization fund to the MSBA Accelerator Repair Program for Asheville Middle School, Eric Russell School, Brookfield School, and the Gilmore School, Early Childhood Center, in order to provide funding to collaborate with the MSBA in conducting a feasibility study for potential roof, boiler, window, and door replacement at the named schools. However, for the record, the stabilization fund balance prior to a favorable vote is only 2.4 million. Additional future funding from city sources will impose a significant financing challenge, even with state assistance at 80 percent. The certification letter is not applicable to these future costs, which will likely be from barring with city council approval to be sought at a later date. End council June 23, writing for the Standing Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Counselors, questions on adoption by roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azat.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes. Counselors, appropriations adopted.
Order that the city council authorize the mayor to enter the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Abington and the city of Brockton for transport and treatment of wastewater from Abington and transmission. This agreement is intended to supersede and replace the current agreement between the parties, and council June 23, 2014. Refer the committee on finance, that report is favorable.
Counselor Stedenski.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I am going to be making a motion, this be continued to the next month's meeting, of a finance meeting first, and then back in, and the reason for this is, there were questions that were posed to me after that meeting, and even a couple today, that I couldn't answer that I need. In particular, I need David Norton, or whoever's running the plant down there, and I need Mr. Nazarella back for some contingency items. I'm not an attorney, I don't know what's been written in, but if it's going to cost us money down the road to take this cake and put it someplace else, I think that should be written into the contract, so we don't volunteer any type of snare with that. So with that, I make a motion that this be sent back to the finance committee, we'll meet on in August, and then bring it back up in August.
Second.
Second.
Counselors, valid points, thank you. Motion made, and properly seconded, and we're going to continue that to the fincom, the only fincom we have in August, August 18th. All in favor? All opposed, that motion carries. We're going to continue that until August 18th. Thank you, Counselor.
Resolve that the mayor's superintendent of utilities and the members of the Water Commission be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the rate charges, charge for water in the city. End council June 23, 2014. Refer the committee on finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azat.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Dubois.
No.
Iannieri.
No.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
No.
Stewart.
No.
Stedenski.
No.
Sullivan.
No.
No.
Counselors, that resolve fails.
Resolve that the representatives of the Department of Public Works be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the possibility of implementation of uniform trash barrels, and council June 23, 2014. Refer the committee on finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Azat.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Iannieri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes. This is all hereby adopted.
Mr. President.
Counselor Dubois.
I'd like to make a motion to take number 40 through 41, 42, and 43 collectively and under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion made to take collectively 40 through 43.
Yes.
And under suspension of rules. Motion was made, properly seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Clerk.
Order that the DPW is authorized to issue one single family home sewer connection to the properties owned by James Morrissey, Lot 1 on Melrose Street. Authorized to issue one single family home sewer connection to the properties owned by James Morrissey, Lot 2 on Melrose. Order that the DPW authorized to issue one single family home sewer connection to the properties owned by Lammish Lucia, Zero North Avenue. Order that the DPW is authorized to issue a one single family home sewer connection to the properties owned by Ralph Smith, Plot 44, Winter Street.
Counselor Dubois, just for the record, could you explain the basis for the suspension of rules, just for the record?
Thank you very much. The basis for the suspension of the rules is it's summer session, and right now, Ward 6 has the most single-family home development going on across the whole city, and so the iron is hot for these folks. I spoke with the people at the DPW, they say it will not affect the sewer connection conduits that are troubled in Ward 6, it's a different area, so that's why I asked for a suspension of the rules, so we don't hold up this development.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
We'll note that in the record. Counselors, 40 through 43 now, question on those, on relative to adoption, is by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azat.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Iannieri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Yes. Counselors, agenda items 40 through 43, those orders are hereby adopted.